So we'll wait just for a few minutes.
and Business Development Committee. We have items related to the Business Tax Advisory Committee, and so I'd like to get started with item number one, which is the BTAC report.
Item number one is a communication from the Business Tax Advisory Committee relative to the City of Los Angeles business tax issues.
Okay, who's going to present? Who's going to present the recommendations?
I will along with my colleagues, Mel and Dwayne.
No, you all filled out cards and you didn't have to.
You have cards for all three of us. This is Lloyd Greif, Chairman of BTAC.
And I'm Mel Conne, member of BTAC.
And Dwayne Gather is also a member of the BTAC.
So, thank you. We would like to walk you through our recommendations. Looks like we're two council members short, so we're happy to repeat whatever is necessary when the rest of the committee arrives. What you have in...
We want no repeats.
No repeats, all right. You got it, however you want to do it.
Don't worry, they'll catch up.
Sounds good. So BTAC was tasked with an objective of endeavoring to make Los Angeles City more business friendly, and we're looking at a variety of issues, but the first issue is in terms of recommendations that we'd like to address and what we're going to speak about this afternoon, are recommendations relating to enhancing fairness, equity, consistency, and transparency in the administrative process associated with how business tax is assessed, collected, appealed, and finally determined. So we have put together as our initial recommendations 10 separate individual recommendations, and I'm going to walk you through them. I believe you have a copy of that correspondence dated April 15th from BTAC. And each one of these recommendations will fit in one of those categories that I enumerated. The first one deals with, I guess the big picture is all about trying to put the taxpayer in a position where they understand when they decide to come to the City of Los Angeles, and that's what we want. We want taxpayers to come to the City of Los Angeles. There was a lot of research that was done, meetings that were conducted, not only with city professionals, but frankly with the state and local taxation professionals who work day in and day out, with the Office of Finance, who work day in and day out with entrepreneurial businesses and large corporations, and determining what issues they have. And what we found was it's not just an issue of businesses leaving the jurisdiction of the city, it's also a question of businesses being discouraged from coming and locating within the jurisdiction of the city. And that is, of course, difficult to quantify, but it was clear that at least at a 10 to one ratio lawyers were advising their clients not to come to the city, and there were a number of reasons why. One, you know, clearly the level of taxation, but we'll discuss that at some future meeting, but also to the lack of certainty, the lack of transparency and consistency, and frankly even the lack of fairness. And so that's what these specific recommendations, council members, were endeavoring to address. The first recommendation, and I'm going to ask my colleagues to join in as they deem appropriate throughout, but the first recommendation...
Let me also note for the record that Councilmember Parks and Councilmember Corian have joined me. Okay, please.
Okay, so the first recommendation is to just try and provide to ultimately to the taxpayer, but certainly to the professionals as well as their financial officers, guidelines as to how the taxes are assessed and administered here in the City of Los Angeles. And there's a lot of materials that frankly aren't available, that are available if you look in other jurisdictions, whether it's Franchise Tax Board or IRS, that are available, but here in the City of Los Angeles are not available. And specifically, so recommendation number one states that the Office of Finance will place a redacted auditor's manual plus other training material for use by the public, place that online, and also that the City Attorney and the former City Clerk and Office of Finance Guidance Memorandums addressing industry classification, measure of tax, apportionment, and audit procedures will also be placed online. So the point is let everybody understand how the game is played so that they can better assess, you know, so that they're able to comply, we don't have issues, we don't have ignorant taxpayers out there, or taxpayers that really aren't certain about what their position is. Certainty is better, not worse. Uncertainty and confusion is what causes taxpayers not to want to take the risk and ultimately not to locate within the city limits. The redaction specifically is because there are some, some of these manuals do identify, you know, case studies that specifically identify the taxpayer, and of course that's really private information, so you would redact the names of the taxpayers in that case. That's recommendation number one. Recommendation number two deals with the fact that there really is no stated statute limitations. There seems to be a lot of confusion and zero clarity as to what the statute of limitations is for collecting the business tax. And so what we're proposing with our second recommendation is that there be a three-year statute of limitations for timely filed returns, three years from the date of filing for delinquent returns, and six years in the cases where taxpayers have not filed returns but should have filed returns. So that would be six years for returns that have not been filed, and it's obviously double the period because you do not want to reward taxpayers that are not, you know, abiding by, you know, voluntary compliance and playing by the rules. If the Office of Finance requests that a taxpayer execute a waiver of statute of limitations in order to allow more time for the audit, and the taxpayer, you know, concurs and signs that waiver, then the city will also similarly extend the timeframe for that same taxpayer that they can file a refund if it turns out that audit shows that they have a refund coming to them. It shouldn't be a catch-22 where they can only be, where the time period's only extended to allow them to pay taxes, but it's not extended to allow them to receive a refund.
Let me just ask, one thing I didn't understand on that recommendation, does it require their waiver?
It does.
And if they don't waive, then what's the situation?
If they don't waive, then the city has to make a determination as to whether to go ahead and make an assessment at that point in time based on the information that they have available to them.
Generally, they would then make a estimate, which is generally overstated. Because that's the only way they can hold the line on the statute.
That's correct, but that's between the taxpayer and the city. If the taxpayer wishes to run that risk, then that's a decision that that individual taxpayer would make.
That's the only way they can cure it by then having time to finish the audit. They can then just say, okay, we're going to estimate what's yours, and they put it in the system, and away we go.
That is correct, Councilman Parks, and that is similar to the way the Internal Revenue and Franchise Tax Board do it. If the taxpayer does not want to extend statute, then they will assess. So that is still in place.
But that's not a concern, I mean, I just want to make sure...
Not a concern of ours. The concern was, again, as Lloyd said, the concern is certainty, once and for all, that the taxpayer knows what statute is.
And you've gotten, Department of Finance agrees that they can work within that timeline?
We have had discussions with Finance, I'm sure we'll have more after this report.
Let me ask you, the, I understand the CLA got this report Friday?
They would have gotten it Thursday is when we submitted our paperwork.
Okay, Thursday.
So I don't know what day they would have gotten it. All I know is I submitted it to your staff on Thursday.
How about the City Attorney? When did the City Attorney get the report?
Marissa, or Marissa, do you know?
Oh, everybody got it.
And we got it at the same time.
Okay, so that is, that is probably too quick for city work, so I just want to make it clear that my intention is not to send these to council directly, but to allow two weeks for those affected agencies to absorb these recommendations and come back if they have any other recommendations. We already know, for example, that the City Attorney has some concerns about publishing some of the information that you've recommended, so we just want to get clarity on all that. I also would recommend that you work directly with the CLA and the City Attorney to make sure on each and every recommendation that there's a clear understanding of. So if you have a firm position on something, you disagree with them, we want to know what the two positions are. If you can come to an agreement, that's even better. But in any case, we'll table this for about two weeks. We want the presentation today to air it out, and then my intention is to move forward in a couple of weeks, one way or the other.
That's fine, fast track.
Understood. Just to come back for the benefit of Councilmember Parks and Councilmember Corian, I'm Lloyd Greif, I'm Chairman of BTAC. On my left is Dwayne Gather, on my right is Mel Conne, both members of BTAC as well. And we were...
This report is largely their fault, I mean, their responsibility.
Not sure I gather where the fault comment went from, came from Councilmember Alacon, so we'll just ignore it.
Well, when the council passes it and does marvelous things, then we'll claim credit.
It was our work.
This is a marvelous thing. If we're not convincing you, if we're not convincing you of that, we're going to have to work a little harder at that. So again, the big picture is we want to make the business tax code consistent, transparent, fair, equitable. So BTAC, one recommendation is dealing with consistency and transparency. Number two is dealing with fairness.
As far as I know, there's no real problem with recommendation number one.
Okay.
So that's just from my perspective.
Understand.
Let it fall into the mix. With regard to recommendation number two, and the, hold on a second. With regard to recommendation number one, the second part of recommendation number one is the problem. So where it says the Office of Finance to place a redacted auditor's manual plus other training material online for public use, there doesn't appear to be a problem there. But the City Attorney has some concern about the section part, which continues, in addition, all City Attorney, former City Clerk, and Office of Finance Guidance Memorandums addressing industry classification, measure of tax, apportionment, and audit procedures to be placed online. I think the City Attorney clearly, and the attorney amongst us just went, hmm. So I guess in attorney talk, they have some concern with that. It has to do with a standing practice, and I don't know whether it's based on administrative code, or charter, or standard legal practice, but apparently we do not publish legal opinions because it apparently violates attorney-client privilege, so that's something that, maybe there's another way to get around that.
Okay, and one would presume you could redact to the point where it wouldn't be clear who your client was, but we can discuss that with the City Attorney offline.
Absolutely.
Any further discussion on BTAC two, on the second recommendation on statute of limitations, which again is all about clearing up what clearly is a confusing muddle at this point for the taxpayer?
At this point, of course, we don't have considerable input from the CLA, but it appears to be satisfactory from my perspective.
My only concern would be that we get the CLA and also Department of Finance to just make sure they vetted it and that we're not imposing standards beyond what they can accomplish. Because so many of their audits start at a year to two to three years old, I mean, so it depends on, they'd be out of statute before they even started the audit.
I would beg to differ. I think historically it has been a three-year statute of limitations that was imposed consistently by the Office of Finance until very recently.
All I'm saying is that I appreciate them signing off on item two and three so that we have a comfort level that can fulfill what your recommendation is.
I understand it, Councilmember Parks, and I also understand that the Office of Finance may not agree with everything that BTAC recommends, that won't change our recommendations necessarily.
But it might change my opinion.
Appreciate that.
Yeah, the, I think unanimity of thinking is the best approach, but if we can't get there, we recognize that, we'll make the final decisions, but we definitely, the worst thing we can do is hear from one side and not hear multiple...
Nobody's suggesting that.
So we just want to make sure that everybody has an opportunity to report to us.
Great.
Thank you.
Recommendation three.
Besides, it wouldn't be any fun. If everybody agreed to everything without any debate, we probably weren't doing a whole lot. So we want these to be agreed to.
It would be too easy a job, right?
Exactly.
Because we couldn't sit on our side and call you names.
Well, that too. Okay, I think we're on recommendation number three, correct?
Okay, we are on recommendation number three. We had talked about the statute of limitations for assessments. This one deals with statute of limitations for refunds. Again, confusion associated with that. The recommendation is for city staff to amend the business tax ordinance to increase the refund period to three years from the original date of filing, or one year from date of payment if later, and to also permit taxpayers to claim credits and/or refunds on their tax return. Any questions?
Apparently there's a charter provision affecting, that is contrary to your recommendation, so it would require a charter change. That's, we're advised that by the City Attorney, but there may be an alternative way to accomplish the same thing. So if you sit down with the City Attorney, you might be able to find an alternative method.
Is there a report that the City Attorney provided to you that we might be able to see? It sounds like you're operating on a basis of information that's not...
We're operating on the basis of verbal communication because we just got the report Thursday, so that's why we want at least a couple of weeks to absorb it.
Understood. We had, in putting these recommendations together, consultation did occur with the City Attorney, so obviously this is a little surprising at this point, but we'll move on.
I don't understand why you wouldn't have been aware that, or I'm assuming you weren't aware that the City Attorney believes there's a conflict in the charter?
I wasn't aware, no.
I was not mentioned.
No. Hasn't come...
The City Attorney's office.
Yeah, you'll note on the...
He did note on number one, the redaction was an issue we had a long discussion about.
Let's see, all claims are done against...
We met with the City Attorney on March 26th, and that subject was not raised as a problem.
Yeah, the Charter section 350A...
350A?
Yes, reads, "All claims for damages against the city must be presented within one year for property damage after the occurrence from which the damages arose, or after the last item of the account or claim accrued." So it appears there's a conflict, but like I said, there may be a way to get around that, to accomplish the same purpose.
The fairness that we're trying to generate here was if you have three years to collect taxes, you know, what's good for the goose is good for the gander, three years to get a refund if you overpaid. If you underpaid, three years to cough it up. If you overpaid, three years to get it back.
You know, quite frankly, there may be many recommendations that you make in the course of 18 months that run counter to the city charter. So one of the things that you may want to explore is the feasibility of charter change. And if you can't get around this without conflicting with the charter, maybe that's your recommendation. I don't have an opinion because once we get to the charter stopping us, you know, I think, I want to send you back and see if you can come up with something else.
Totally understood.
But if there's, the only way to fix it is to go to the charter, then fine, we may agree that we have to do that. And in fact, that's fairly typical with special committees such as yours.
Okay, thank you. Recommendation...
I'm sorry, I failed to mention that the President of City Council is Eric Garcetti.
Working with the City Clerk.
Your staff may be looking for you, I don't know. Thought I'd let them know you're here. Oh, sorry. Okay, we were on item number four.
So item number four is for city staff to modify sections 5.173 and 5.177 of the city ordinance to increase the settlement amount of authority. The purpose of this is to try and increase the efficiency, to get tax disputes and disagreements resolved more quickly, more efficiently, without having to have it go all the way up to the city council. So this would increase the settlement authority for the City Attorney's office from its current level of $50,000 to $100,000 in principal.
Yeah, I personally don't have a problem with that, but...
It's kind of an old, it's a backdated number, it's a number that time has passed by.
Again, I think the CLA wants to review that and work with council to...
You know, one thing also, there's a part of the process that's been ignored is that the Claims Board, it's a very similar process we do with claims and lawsuits, and so I don't see a problem with $50,000 at the City Attorney and the Claims Board doing $100, but it's generally $100 net, it's not $100 principal, and then interest and penalty added to it. So it's a matter of coming out with a number that fits those two processes.
Yeah, we were aware of that, and again, just being in contemporary times, $100,000 in principal because $50,000 principal can be $120,000 because of penalties and interest. So we are trying to deal with the reality of...
I'm saying for the consistency of the process, that those are the cutoffs, 50 and 100, anything over 100 and above go the council. So if we're trying to pattern it after the Claims Board, that's basically...
Can I ask, Mr. Parks, how many of these actually come to the council?
You get a few of them because most of them are over $100,000. You'll see them where we, most of the ones you get are overpayment, and...
So we're already over that threshold, or...
Well, no, I mean, the thing is, they come there saying if they're up to 100, they could be done at Claims Board, you wouldn't get them. Most of them that you get are over $100,000.
So how many do we get a year?
I would guess you're getting about a dozen or so, it's not a whole lot.
But of those, most of them are over $100,000 anyway?
Probably, I'm at 50/50, because the City Attorney can only do...
If they're over $100,000, they're going to come to us anyway.
Anyway, yeah, but there's a small number of them that are under $100,000 that could be done at the Claims Board. The key would be on the dollar amount, is it inclusive of the interest and penalty, or is it principal plus interest and penalty? So that's basically.
Interesting. Well, the less that has to come to us, the better, as far as I'm concerned, but...
Hence the $100,000 in principal recommendation.
The CLA is trying to protect the council's interests, but we'll hear from them in a couple of weeks.
And we're just trying to have a workable system that's, that results in businesses being attracted to Los Angeles. Recommendation five. This is, and we understand that there's an upcoming ordinance that's being prepared by the City Attorney. We're voicing our support for that ordinance. It's an ordinance that would disallow the reversal of prior findings by the Board of Review on business tax issues. And we'd also want to go a little beyond that and instruct the CLO to add language prohibiting auditors within the Office of Finance from directly countermanding previous audit findings. Again, this is all about consistency and transparency, and so the taxpayer isn't being, you know, bouncing from one auditor to another auditor to another auditor, being given different direction each time with the passage of time, or having a Board of Review decision that even though there's been no material change in circumstances, no change in the taxpayer's business, they yet have to deal with a totally change in what Office of Finance is instructing them at their peril. That, I think, definitely goes to consistency, fairness, and transparency, really hits all three of the issues that we're trying to resolve with these recommendations.
Would it solve your issue if the city returned to the prior 2005 and just made the Board of Review a final?
I'm sorry, how is your, maybe we can ask it this way, how is your measure different than the upcoming ordinance that is being drafted by the City Attorney?
Well, as I, we understand that the ordinance being drafted by the City Attorney deals with Board of Review, and we're suggesting it be expanded to deal with Board of Review and prior audit findings by auditors. So if you have, you know, two years ago Mary Jones did the audit, and next year Bill Franks is doing the audit, and you have two different auditors coming up with two different results based on the same facts, that puts the taxpayer in jeopardy.
And this is consistent...
Is the City Attorney... This is consistent with the Board of Equalization.
I understand the City Attorney who's drafting the ordinance is present. Can you maybe help us through this one?
I think the point that Mel just made was important, if you could...
I'm sorry, go ahead, Mel.
The point is, this is, we followed the State Board of Equalization Code on this, which has been very effective, especially for the taxpayer professionals, in giving certainty to these, which we've now seen in current events has caused quite a commotion of, again, business needs to know certainty when they want to come to LA, and this is just being consistent with the prior findings. And again, it's been in effect for a while with the State Board of Equalization, we feel it should be adopted similarly for the city.
Yeah, I don't see an inconsistency, I just see an expansion of what we've done.
Deputy City Attorney Dan Whitley. The ordinance we drafted would apply only to findings by the Board of Review, it would not apply to determinations by an auditor.
So the really, the recommendation is not necessarily in conflict with the ordinance being drafted?
It's not in conflict, but it would be an expansion. My understanding is that right now the Board of Review only is considering a small portion of all of the audits that occur. I believe that the Office of Finance is auditing approximately 4% or something like that of all of the returns that are filed every year. So that's the number of taxpayers that we would then be at issue if we expand this to include audits. The Board of Review is only considering a small number of taxpayers. So this would be a vast expansion of the number of taxpayers we would now be considering.
I don't know, I'm hearing the reverse, so maybe somebody can...
Let me just ask you, the Board of Review is upon their repeal, appeal.
Exactly.
And then prior to 2005, it used to be a final decision.
Exactly, okay.
And so that, but we, the wording got a little warped when we changed the ordinance after 2005.
Yes, that's true.
But I think what, from what I understand, that they make an appeal, Board of Review does it, and what brought this to our attention is that somebody overturned the Board of Review because of the wording was kind of mushy. If we go back to the 2005 version, it would be a final decision. I think the issue of whether you push that to audits is a totally different ballgame.
I don't think that, that's not what I'm hearing you recommending, though.
We're recommending that audits, we're recommending that, if you think about it conceptually, and forget whether you're talking about Board of Review or you're talking about audit, you're talking about a decision that's being made on the taxes due by the Office of Finance, whether it's a Board of Review or it's an individual auditor. Once those decisions are made, the taxpayer should have the right to rely on those decisions for future, for their future conduct. They should have certainty as to what taxes are owed, and if you can have a new auditor walk through the door, or a new Board of Review assemble, and make a totally contrary decision to what preceded it, then the taxpayer is at jeopardy, and that means there's uncertainty in the system, and that means there's inequity in the system.
That seems to me that it would have a reduction effect on what the Board of Review has to do. You're saying that they would actually have more to do.
Well, that I'm not sure about.
He didn't say the Board of Review has more work, he's saying there would be more cases that would be under this particular ordinance that would say you couldn't go back and reevaluate them, not that they'd go to...
Which is a good thing, okay? That's a good thing, that's not a bad thing.
It just depends on whose ox is being gored. I think the issue is, is that...
There's only one ox being gored here, is the taxpayer. That's the one we're dealing with.
Well, not necessarily, because the taxpayer also benefits from the business tax that we get. But I think what we have to look at is if you're saying an employee makes a mistake as an auditor, forevermore we should comply with that mistake. That's why they go back and look at audits, which in my judgment are different than Boards of Review.
Respectfully, Councilmember Parks, who's to say when the mistake is made? Is it made by the auditor who did it three years ago, is it made by the auditor who's now doing it? And I think that's where the issue comes in, we don't know who's making the mistake. At some point, the taxpayer has a right to understand what the rules of the game are, and if you change the rules of the game after he's been playing it for two or three years, that's not fair.
But isn't that where the Board of Review resolves that?
I would just like to point out that what I'm trying to say is that the revenue losses that could happen from expanding this from the Board of Review to the audit level is a vast expansion. We're talking about a small number of Board of Review cases versus a large number of audit cases, and at this point, we don't have any projections from the Office of Finance about what that is. from the Office of Finance about what that is, and we need to do some study of that. And again, the Board of Equalization is a different animal from the Franchise Tax Board, which does not have any similar regulation. And I believe that when the Office of Finance is auditing business taxes, it's more like the Franchise Tax Board than the Board of Equalization. And there's a reason why the Franchise Tax Board doesn't have a similar regulation. The Board of Equalization, when they are auditing their returns, one of the big issues that comes up is sampling and things of that nature, which are highly technical. And so generally, when the Board of Equalization is doing their returns, and they're, when they're doing their audits, one of the issues that comes up is sampling sizes, because the Board of Equalization is dealing with sales taxes. And so one of the issues that's coming up is, when you have a big retailer or something like that, they don't want to go in and have to look at every sales that comes up. They have sampling methods that deal with statistics and things like that. And so they want to be locked into a certain sampling method they can use year after year after year.
We don't have that.
We don't have that sort of method coming up all the time. One thing that is similar is that often you have a retailer versus wholesale sort of issue, and you have various things where some items are excluded from sales tax, some are not. And that's somewhat similar to what we have, but that's not a big issue for the Board of Equalization in the same way that our classification is. I think we're more like the Franchise Tax Board and, and an income tax system.
Okay, I'll tell you one thing. I need to know a lot more about this, because this is not...
There's something...
But let me...
Somebody, the city attorney said it's very concerning to me.
Wait, wait, let me finish. So I need, I need a more complete briefing. Maybe the Budget Finance Committee is much, much more adept at this. I certainly don't know enough about it. So I need to understand a little bit more.
Yes, go right ahead.
I'd like to make one comment. The issue is, if you have a statute and you do business by that statute, you can't change after you've had an audit. Basically, what we're saying is, you've had an audit, the auditor's made a decision, you're following the code, and then you're coming by three years, four years, five years, and saying, by the way, other auditor, you're not following the code. That's exactly what this is saying. Now, what it also says in this is going forward, you have to adapt. But what it's saying, there is no assessment for this period.
See, see, I think, I think that's, that's where...
And that is fairness, and that's, again, certainty.
We don't want to, we don't want to keep the same mistake.
Yeah, well, I agree.
That if we find a mistake, we can change it, but, but why should somebody be penalized for that mistake if they didn't know they were, they were doing it?
Correct, because they're justifiably relying on what they've been told.
And there's a finding on our part that, that says you're doing okay.
What we've seen in, in the claims board, the high, high percentages of the errors are not where people are following the direction of the city. It's their misinterpretation of the code. And then the city goes back and finds out they misinterpreted, they put themselves in the wrong classification, or they basically pay taxes on business that wasn't in the city. But it's not the city telling them, go to Code A and say this. It's their accountants and their bookkeepers that are making those judgments, not basically, it's their interpretation of the city's rules are where we find most of the errors occur.
Yeah, but that's not what we're, that's not what we mean to address with this.
To me, I think the key question is whether or not somebody should be penalized for acting in a way that they were instructed to act. And that's the question we have to answer.
I believe that sums it up. That's our position.
Okay. And, and moving forward, we can, we can change direction if we find that we made an error. But why should somebody be penalized when we told them to act that way? I don't think the court system works that way.
We told them.
I believe, Mr. Garcetti, you wanted just to make some comments?
Just very briefly, and I don't want to take away from the committee's work. I just wanted to thank you all and thank BTAC for their hard work. I think we all gave them a charge to not take a year, not do a study that would go on a shelf, but as things were moving, to bring things to us very rapidly. So I appreciate these 10 recommendations. And I just encourage, you know, you all to sit down with the CLA and work through some of this, and, and the city attorney's office, if there weren't those issues, to do that rapidly. I know Mr. Alacon was given a couple of weeks, so maybe in those two weeks' time, we can work out those issues. We're certainly, I think, as a, a full council, prepared to move this when committee does. And I think it's very important for us to be moving some of this, to show that progress quickly, especially given all the work that you've put in on your volunteer time and with the expertise that you have here. We know that these are the easier ones. It's going to get tougher the more we look at policy issues on the, the rates and overall revenue sources, how we do that to protect ourselves in bad budget years like this, but continue that forward momentum. So I just wanted to come here. We put out a release for the committee just to let people know what had happened out there, so they could look through these 10 recommendations. But I would ask the, the CLA to work closely with and make sure they make themselves available too, and vice versa. You all can sit down, because we'll rely on that input from the CLA's office. But let's find a way to get to yes on these instead of a, a way to, to stop, because we know there's a thousand ways to, to kill anything and only one way to get it through. But I look forward to this committee producing that. Appreciate your leadership, Mr. Chair. Thanks.
Let me just, Mr. Garcetti, one of the things that I think would be helpful for all of us, you put a motion together in November about a analysis, financial analysis on these kinds of recommendations. And I think that's something that, at some point, has to be put in play, because, you know, one of the things, what happened, I think, on the last BTAC, and we, we corrected it recently, one of the recommendations is that we paid the same interest for underpayment as overpayment. It cost us $700,000 in two years on overpayments that were under no circumstances responsibility of the city. People put decimal points in the wrong place and things like that, and we're paying 6% interest on overpayments. And I think we corrected it now. But I think we need the financial analysis before many of these issues. We can make heads or tails out of them. Because if we do it by, by topsy, we'll find out two years later, it was far more expensive than we thought.
Yeah, and maybe some of what we can do is, again, you know, not making that the price of inaction, but some of this we can move forward, get that analysis as it's going. If some is more complex, I'd hate for some of these things to sit around for six months as we do the analysis. I think, as we did with those other ones, we, we made some good calls and some other ones that had to be corrected. These are living documents. But the business community and small businesses in, in LA have spoken loud and clear that if we don't make some of this a little bit more user-friendly, it just continues to chase business away.
Many of these recommendations, frankly, are not susceptible to financial analysis. I would think you'd be, you know, figures can lie and liars can figure. I don't, a lot of these recommendations that you see of these 10, frankly, are not capable of being quantified. So if you want to kill them by putting them into trying to quantify them and then, and then take them up at that point in time, I'm not sure what that's going to accomplish. Why don't we continue on?
I don't think anybody recommended killing anything.
And a couple of these I disagree with. They are, they can be quantified.
Well, maybe a couple, but there's 10 here. And that's my point.
But you said 10.
No, I'm saying, I'm saying, I'm saying many of these cannot be, which means the majority of these cannot be quantified, and that kind of analysis will not show you anything.
The thing I'm saying is those that can, we should.
No argument. Okay, we're on number six. This one deals with, we think this one will actually generate revenues and hopefully increase compliance. This is to create and implement a permanent voluntary disclosure agreement, so that cities, that is, businesses subject to the business tax who haven't registered and haven't been discovered by the city can voluntarily come forward and pay taxes that are due. This would have a four-year look back, but would waive penalties and would be in place permanently, so that at any point in time, any business can come forward, as opposed to a temporary, you know, tax amnesty that comes and goes. The whole point of this is so that, you know, you can get businesses who might otherwise be reticent because they recognize they haven't been found yet, and they're scared about the penalties, because the penalties obviously can be quite significant for taxpayers haven't paid for, say, two or three years down in the back, to get them to come forward. The company, the, the city is net-net ahead with, with such a program. And it would clearly increase, we think would increase compliance, and by so doing, generate newfound money for the city. That's recommendation number six.
Can I ask?
Sure.
Well, we specifically want the CLA to give us their view of the fiscal impact of implementing this type of program. We know that for specific durations of time, that these have been very successful, but over a prolonged period of time, we don't know, we don't know what will happen. But I, I also know that there are many, many businesses who are operating without participating in getting their permits, et cetera. You know, it's funny, my wife, my wife got a letter the other day, and interesting, because it's, it's, a letter is mailed to her from the, from a third-party private-sector company, paid for by the Office of Finance. And the letter is to say, we don't have any record of your business permit. And the irony of it is, she's, her business isn't under her name. It's, it's a, she, she has a DBA. So she's, she's, imagine all the thousands of letters that are going out to, to the owner of a business who, who isn't the name of the company. And what a waste when she's... So, but there are a lot of companies, apparently by virtue of this, this operation that the Office of Finance runs, there are a lot of companies that are operating without a business permit. And the question is, if, if we had a, an ongoing program, would they, would they participate more willingly?
Just to add one point, so you know the genesis of where this came from. Other agencies, taxing agencies have voluntary disclosure agreements. But one of the thing that have happened in accounting...
You do realize it takes away the political opportunity to, to make a pronouncement that you're doing this temporary thing.
But one of the things in the accounting profession, there is AICPA rule called FIN 48, which requires public companies to make disclosures on, on tax policies in question. So for example, excuse me, if they have decided as a policy not to disclose that they are not paying Los Angeles City Business Tax, they would then have to disclose this in their financial statements in the footnotes. So part of this is, and in speaking with the big four accounting firms who are part of our forum, one of the things they are finding, that the companies that are not complying with local taxes want to comply now, because they don't want to have a disclosure in their financial statements. The purpose of recommendation six is to provide this avenue. And again, these are mostly larger companies, and we believe that by putting in the VDA, it'll allow the city to accelerate income and to find these people where they can come forward. And it's kind of a combination of their own responsibility in the public world, and the city, we believe, should be getting, and they're entitled to revenue.
Lloyd, I'm sorry.
No, and obviously, once they come forward, you've got them. You've not, that's got them for the historical period, the four-year period. You've got them for every year thereafter.
Okay, well, I, I think the CLA, or probably the CAO can review, look at other jurisdictions, look at other similar organizations to see what, what their experience has been.
She was recommendation that they pay the, the principal and the interest, but not the penalty.
That is correct. And that's, and that's designed to be an inducement for them to come forward voluntarily and participate in the program. Recommendation seven. This one, again, deals with the uncertainty that Mel mentioned earlier in our remarks. We're trying to get transparency and fairness, and specifically, you know, the city has a classification system. That classification system obviously determines what tax rate taxpayer will pay. Sometimes it may not be a clear, bright line that'll determine where a business will fall. And so this provides an opportunity for a business, without having to make that decision that they've located in the city and then find out, much to their chagrin, that the classification they thought they fell into is not the classification Office of Finance thinks they fall into, for them to get effectively a pre-determination, you know, classification upon registration. So it would be a 60-day turnaround, so that new businesses will know exactly what classification they are in, and that can hopefully clarify and encourage them to, to locate, knowing that there's no, they're not going to get surprised 12 months down the road as to what their taxes are.
I think this one is pretty clear. What, what isn't clear is what kind of staffing might be needed to guarantee the turnaround. In other words, the Office of Finance might have to hire new people, and, and right now, we're, we're not exactly in hiring mode. So we would ask, again, the CLA to review that.
My reaction would be, that'd probably be a good problem to have, because if we got more businesses applying to this, that means they're seriously contemplating locating in the city, and hopefully, this will encourage more location within the city, which means more revenues ultimately for the city and more jobs.
And just to point out, this would be a voluntary program. Every business would not have to do it. But we think it's important, again, for certainty, and also, if you look at risk versus reward...
What would be voluntary?
Pardon?
What would be voluntary?
That they seek a classification, a pre-classification, a classification ruling.
But we want, it's important it be available. And again, this is talking with big four accountants who are dealing with large businesses, Fortune 100, Fortune 500 companies. They need certainty, because the big four accountants are the people telling them whether to do business in LA or not. And this is, again, from our forum and doing our own due diligence. And not to run the Office of Finance, but I think it's important that there be a deployment of people in important areas. And this is a revenue, this is an area which eliminates potential legal costs down the line. And I think it's really important that you deal with it upfront, other than what we've seen in the last three months in the newspapers.
That will, it'll, that will hopefully eliminate some of the negative publicity that he's making, making reference to, where, where businesses feel that they've been baited and switched. It'll, it will, it will...
I've been in office 17 years. You will never convince me of that.
I will, let me, let me put it this way. If you're...
I don't do this, I don't do this to change businesses' perspective, perspective of city government. I do this because I think it's right, because I don't believe we'll ever change businesses' view of city government. So please don't use that argument with this chair anymore, because...
I, I think there's an opportunity for the city of Los Angeles to make a statement here and be more business-friendly. And I think that the city can do that, if the city has the will to do that.
Well, that's, that's the whole purpose of BTAC, and that's, that's why we, we established BTAC.
So this is going to appeal to large taxpayers. A small taxpayer isn't even going to know that this exists, that they have the right to get this classification. But large taxpayers are going to definitely look before they leap. And if you can get more of those large taxpayers to locate within the city, the city is better off.
Yeah, I don't, you know, what I'm, what I'm afraid is, the CLA may come back with a recommendation where we charge a fee for expediting or something like that, so that we can pay for the staff that it takes to do these. And because, because the, because it's a theory that, that they will generate more revenue because it'll be more business-friendly. Whereas it competes with a traffic cop, that we know they're generating revenue, and we're not going to eliminate those positions, because we know they're generating more revenue than they cost us. We can't make that same argument here, because it's theoretical.
Okay.
So the bottom line is that we're not hiring right now, and we're not likely to hire in the next year. So maybe this is something that we project out and, and do when we have the opportunity to hire. But, but I just, I just don't, I don't think it's feasible to think that we're going to be hiring people, partly because it sends a negative message to business that we're paying for more staff and costing government more and all that. I'm being facetious, but not really.
Thank you.
The, the point is that, that I don't think the city's going to be doing any hiring, significant hiring in, in the next year.
Let me ask a non, a non- rhetorical question of the committee, if I may. Does the committee think that there are businesses that seek the advice of council before making determination about, about the business tax situation in the city of Los Angeles, before making determination to locate within the city limits?
Well, if they're smart.
Okay, I'll take that as a yes. And I can tell you that what we heard unanimously from the salt experts that deal with this, this day in and day out, is they get called all the time asking for a recommendation as to whether they should locate within the city. And their recommendations are no.
And I think you could say the same thing about rent. You could say the same thing about utilities. They, if they're a smart business, they're going to look at all that. And it's no different, as we've, years pass, with NFL. All players decide where they might want to get drafted or traded based on the state income tax laws. And they know they have to get paid more to compensate. So I think anybody that's in business has to make those determinations, and then people make decisions that flow with that. So I don't think it's just the taxi, it's the rental, it's the utilities, it's the transportation... transportation, it's the whole gamut of why you move to a place.
Yeah, but the business tax is pretty visible, Councilmember Parks.
I mean, they're saying it's a...
It is, it's kind of a lightning rod.
Yeah, but I mean, it's visible, but we seem to get over 400 million a year in business tax. So, there's somebody out there creating gross revenue in behalf of the city's treasury.
And the city also has underemployment over 20%.
Well, that's not because of business issue, that's the universal issue throughout the United States. It's just not local, in Los Angeles.
The underemployment in the city of Los Angeles, I think, is greater than many other communities.
And even when it's in good times, it's greater, because we're in a service industry.
I, I think the issue is, business tax, in discussing with, and the SALT is state and local tax experts that we had a forum with, we called a forum, city business tax is a tiebreaker. Yes, there are all the, there are the factors of transportation, labor force, utilities, and so forth. But in many instances, in talking with our SALT group, when they give advice, city business tax becomes a tiebreaker, and that's what Lloyd has been referring to. This is not a myth.
You know, we're, we're, we're speaking on global issues. There, there is no issue about the city council supporting measures to reduce the negative impact on business. That's why we created BTEC, and because we believe there are things. But, as I said, if we're not doing things that are controversial, we might as well not do anything at all. Some of these things have to be vetted out more fully, and there will be disagreement. And we've got 15 council members, and we're not always going to get 15 votes. But on those things where there is unanimity of thinking, we don't need to wait either. That's why, that's why we, we're not going to take every recommendation of BPAC and pass it on as the be-all and end-all. We are going to review it, we're going to deliberate, we're going to make decisions as, as a body of a whole. And at the end of the day, I guarantee you, there will be many issues that we, that we move forward. The question, but, but that doesn't mean that we're going to pass 100% of everything.
We understand it.
And so, so we don't, we don't, in this particular case, I don't have a strong opinion one way or the other. What I am saying, though, is that we can't make it work if we can't hire the staff. If we don't hire the staff, if I don't anticipate we're going to hire the staff, we're wasting our time on this recommendation, where we could be working on other recommendations. And, and so...
I don't know how much time it takes for a staff member to classify a business, I would think. We're not talking about significant exertion of effort in classifying the nature of a business.
Well, that's exactly why we need the CLA to review it, to analyze what, what the potential need would be in the Office of Finance. And by the way, don't make any assumptions here. The Office of Finance was hit as hard as anybody in this, because, because many of their employees were members of the engineers and architects, and were furloughed. And right off the bat, they lost 20% of their staff, or, or pretty close to 20% of their staff. So, so they are already overworked to begin with. And we have a higher interest freeze on top of that. The early retirement program, this, the department, as small as it is, is, is having a tough time right now. So, to make an assumption that we can quickly hire people to do this, and, and frankly, if you did a review of the Office of Finance and some of the people they lost, you want to get some of those back, because they are doing some, some of the work that expedites some of those things. So, I'm saying that, that out of context, just looking at this, it's not a bad idea. It's a good idea. But when you consider the reality of what's going on in the city of Los Angeles, you, you, you've got to realize that this may not be as easy as it looks. And that's why, that's why I want the CLA to tell us, if they think it's going to create a need for additional staffing, and then the likelihood that we will be able to staff up. So, at the end of the day, if, if we get a recommendation that, say, we might have to hire two additional staff, we, and, and then we get on the second recommendation, that indication that we're not going to, we're not going to be able to hire staff for one year, then we wait one year. We implement this in one year when we get that staff. So, there's different ways to, to do this. I'm just saying that, that due diligence means you're looking at the whole picture, not just the specific issue, because you could create a world of problems if they have to reassign people from current duties into doing this, and then taking away from some of the other things they're doing, which exacerbates the problems. So, those are, those are the only reason I say, let's do that review, let's get that back. And we're talking about two weeks, and then we'll see whether we can move forward or not. I don't, I just don't think we're that far apart, to tell you the truth.
I'm happy to hear that.
Okay. Eight. We're back, we're on eight now, right?
We are on number eight. This is, so currently, the timeline for filing an appeal with respect to an audit determination is 15 days. The problem with that is, many occasions, when the taxpayer receives that written notification in the mail, those 15 days are more like two or three days left, because it's, you know, the letter they get is always postmarked the week before. 60 days is a much more appropriate and fairer period of time for a taxpayer to be able to make, to, to assess, you know, what the findings are from the audit, and determine how to respond. And if it, and if the taxpayer does make a determination to appeal, penalties shouldn't accrue. There shouldn't be a penalty for appealing.
Is there originally a big 60 days versus 30, or...
Because 60 days struck, struck the committee as being a fair timeframe, not 90, not 30, 60.
There's no, there's no real...
I mean, well, it depends, it depends on the complexity of the taxpayer. The more complex the taxpayer, the more time they're going to have to, they're going to have to analyze the audit results and determine how they should proceed. But go ahead, Mel. You're the, you're the SALT attorney.
I was just going to say, 15 days from the professional is way too short, just what Lloyd talked about when you receive it.
Are these workdays or 15 days?
15 days.
Calendar.
Calendar. So, all we discussed is what would be reasonable to allow time for a company to make a conscious decision with advice from counsel. 35 days, 30 days, 45 days, 60 days, nothing over 60 days, and we just settled on 60 days. 45 days would probably be okay, but the committee, we talked about it, and we wanted to give the taxpayer the benefit of the doubt and the time, whether they wanted to appeal, because it gives them more time, rather than forcing them to making a quick decision.
What you don't want is the taxpayer to try and preserve their rights and appeal when perhaps they wouldn't appeal.
Yeah.
So, if, if it's, it's what you were saying before, if you don't have, it's what Councilmember Parks was saying before, if they don't know, if you don't get a waiver of a statute of limitations, you're going to go ahead and assess taxes based on an estimate, and you're going to over-assess.
Go ahead.
Yes.
What's involved in filing an appeal? Is it the same way as if you were, for example, in litigation, if you file an appeal, it's simply a pro forma notice of appeal, and then you file...
There is a specific form the city has for filing appeals.
Do you have to state your case on the file?
That's my question. Do you have to, do you have to delineate all of your arguments within the...
Or do you just say you're going to appeal?
No.
You have to state your case?
And this is just by memory, on my one appeal. But I'm sure we have Alpha's of Finance that can correct me or answer your question much better.
Okay.
Is there anybody who can answer that?
Very quickly, just to give you some comparison, with the Internal Revenue Service, they have a 90-day period to appeal from a notice of deficiency, so 60 days is, is within the realm.
To answer the councilmember's question, it is just basically a pro forma request at the time that the taxpayer is submitting their requests, either for the ARO hearing or the border review hearing.
And then there's a subsequent timeline for filing a record and filing all of the...
Correct.
... financial justification for the appeal.
Yes, and, and by the way, for the record, Ed Cabrera, Chief of the Tax Permit Division, Office of Finance. But yes, subsequent to the hearing being granted, staff does contact the taxpayer, their representative does attempt to schedule the hearing, and does set out guidelines for a position paper, which would entail the Office of Finance's position, as well as the taxpayer's position.
Is the granting of the hearing ministerial, or is that a discretionary act?
It, it is based on ordinance. There, there is discretion. There, it is a 15-day timeline. If we do receive a request, let's say, within a week after that, we normally will look at it. Also, if a request does come in well past the 15-day deadline, we do look at if there's any extenuating circumstances.
I'm asking something a little different. You said there's a filing of essentially a notice of appeal.
Correct.
And then if a hearing is granted, then there's a time period after that in which to file the, the supporting documentation for it. I'm concerned about the "if the hearing is granted" part, because if that is a discretionary decision, then the taxpayer is, is forced into the position of having to justify the fact of the hearing within that first 15 days.
Let me, let me clarify, I apologize. No, there, it is not discretionary. As long as the request was made timely, then it, it's a de facto approval.
And what is the hearing process? How long?
The hearing process, as far as scheduling, we normally will schedule within 90 days from the date of receipt of the hearing request. Right now, we are scheduling probably within 30 to 60 days. Again...
Of those where hearings are scheduled, how many drop out of the process before the hearing?
Um, just a small number. On average, we have approximately 150 initial-level hearing requests that go to the first level, which is the assessment review officer. From those, we have maybe about 50, roughly about a third, that go on to the border review. As far as those...
My question, my question was, how many drop out before the first hearing?
Um, very few, very few. In some cases, taxpayers do request a hearing, but they also request additional time to work with audit staff. I'd have to go back and look at the stats. We do have some taxpayers that do...
I would like to know that, that what was, what was suggested is that people are filing appeals because they're not sure whether they should or not. So theoretically, after they review it in that 90-day period, they would drop out if they didn't have a concern.
We, there are, that number would be minuscule. We have very few that request a hearing and then drop out.
It's going to be miniscule now.
Right. That, well, we have very few that, that drop out.
Just get us the numbers.
Sure.
Just, just give me those numbers. When the CLA comes back, we'll, we'll have a good answer. The, the CLA's concern might be that more people would file appeals. And with, I think the, the real answer for me is, what's the right thing to do? And, you know, that shouldn't matter. In a, in a, in a quasi-judicial process, it shouldn't matter, you know, whether there's going to be more appeals.
I agree. So does the committee.
Okay. Let me, let me just ask one question. If we go to this 60-day, and you say it takes like 90 days or whatever, what, what's the general timeline? Is that like a five-month process to get through appeal?
Um, if we, well, currently, with the 15-day time limit, time period, we're looking at roughly about a 60-to-90-day process for the hearing to be held, and then roughly another 30 days, on average, for a decision to be released. Then we would also have a 15-day period for a taxpayer to request a border review hearing. So, it, we would, essentially, I, I would just guesstimate that by allowing 90 days, we, I'm sorry, 60 days, we probably would extend that roughly about three months. So, we would be looking at roughly, at the first level, I would say maybe about a six-month period from initiation of the request to scheduling to completion of the hearing.
Thank you.
And how many of these appeals are victorious?
Um, roughly, at the initial level, it's, it's almost a 50-50 split. We provided some statistics to the Business Tax Advisory Committee. I want to say, it was approximately 52% were decided in favor of the city, and roughly about 48% in favor of taxpayers at...
Is there any way to lower that before we even have to go to an appeal?
Oh, well, that's why we do...
The city's performance?
Well, we, while we do, we...
48% inaccuracy is not...
Well, some of the cases are dependent upon information that are provided to audit staff, as was brought out in, in earlier testimony. There are audit cases that are assessed due to the fact that sufficient information was not provided. So, that, the stats that I cited include those cases where...
Well, if you'll repeat my question, is there any way to approve, improve that before they have to go to an appeal?
Yes, we, we can work on...
I was expecting you to say, you know, 80% are found in, in the favor of the city, but you're telling me only 52%? That's not a very good track.
Well, and in fact, wouldn't extending the time for the filing of the appeal afford a greater opportunity to do exactly that kind of a resolution prior to the appeal?
Yes.
So that if inadequate information had been provided to the auditor, the audit staff could get back to the taxpayer and say, "The reason for our findings is this." If you have 30 days for the taxpayer to provide that additional information, or 45 days or whatever before having to file the notice of appeal, it allows another chance to achieve a resolution without the formality and the cost and everything else, and the uncertainty of an appeal.
Yes, that is correct. And we do currently have that option, where taxpayers can submit their request for a hearing, put it in abeyance, and work with the auditor to try to resolve the case in an attempt to resolve it before it goes to a hearing process. So, we do allow that opportunity, but you're correct, that would provide further opportunities for taxpayers and staff.
I want to move us on, but I have one final question. That is, those 48%, how much money did that cost the city?
Um, I would have to look at the stats. Basically, I believe, and I apologize, I'm talk, I'm recalling the figures, I believe the total number of cases that had gone to the ARO that we reported back on was roughly about 19 million.
ARO?
The assessment review officer, the first level, it was about 19 million, and taxpayers, once they went to the hearing, and for those cases that were decided in their favor, saved roughly about 4 million of that 19 million which was assessed.
And that's a typical figure, every year?
Uh, I would say on average, yes.
So, looking at our total budget, it's not a huge figure?
No, in, in that context, no.
But in, okay, okay, thank you. Okay.
And then, by the way, if you wanted to decrease the number of disputes, Recommendation Seven, I think, would do that.
Good, thank you.
All right, Recommendation Nine. This one is...
I agree, by the way.
Thank you. The interest rate, the issue is that the interest rate assessed on tax due is greater than the rate paid on refunds. It's 0.4% per month on tax, it's due, but 0.1, 0.1% per month, when it goes in the other direction, and it's actually money going back to the, to the taxpayer. And again, with a view towards fairness, our proposal is that the interest rate paid on refunds issued to businesses be the same annual rate as that charged on assessments less 1%, which would be consistent with IRS policy. So, we're not saying it's the same, but we're saying it's closer.
Yeah, I, I think we followed your directions last time, and we basically made them even until we figured out how much money it was costing generally on the error of the, basically the business. And so, that's why we reduced it to the minimum that we'd have to pay. I, I think, for me anyway, it seems like it violates logic to say, if you didn't pay your taxes and you didn't comply, that then you have a penalty, an interest, and a principal. But if you, and that should be the same as a person that overpaid. To me, that doesn't...
We're not saying... Number one, you already have your penalty in there, right? So, if you're saying you want to punish the taxpayer, you've got your penalty, I think that's what that's for.
But it's interest and penalty. But the issue is, for somebody that makes an overpayment, I don't think that they would be in the same category as a person that failed to pay their taxes or underpaid. And so, the issue of paying your, the overpayment was, in my judgment, a gift to public funds when you were, you know, people put a decimal point in the wrong place, and we're giving them several thousand dollars because we had it for six months to a year, you know?
Yeah. I think you're combining two points here, because you've got penalty, and that's what the penalty is there for, right? You're, you've been bad, I'm going to penalize you for that. You misbehaved, you didn't pay the taxes that you were supposed to pay. That's a penalty. The interest is associated with the time value of money. The time value of money to the city is the same as it is to the taxpayer. And we're saying they ought to be, we're not saying they need to be equated, but we're saying, you know, let's follow the big guys. IRS says they should be close. We're, we're, we're a 4-1 ratio here.
I think there's a tweener here someplace. The, the, I think what Mr. Parks is saying is, when the error that caused the overpayment is on the, the business's action, then we shouldn't pay an equivalent rate. But maybe when, if we make the mistake and assess them incorrectly, then, then it, it should be the same. I think that's what he's talking about, when he talks about the decimal point.
What we corrected recently was these, because we haven't seen one, at least in the claims board, where, where the city advised and... board, where the city advised and caused the mistake. It was always the business made the mistake, and then we gave them 6% interest for their mistake.
So the CLA is taking notes on that, so we'll have them take a look at that, work with you guys on that, and then come back to us in a couple weeks. Okay?
Fair enough. Final recommendation?
Yep. So far.
Yes, that's correct. For today. Again, deals with both fairness and efficiency. This is a situation where you have a taxpayer that's in a world of hurt, not able to pay. It's a way to try and, it's an offer and compromise program, similar to what the IRS offers and the state of California, would allow businesses, they can provide proof of their inability to pay the full amount of past due tax, to enter into a settlement agreement with the city of Los Angeles, for an amount that's, you know, it's affordable based on, you know, based on the documented circumstances of the taxpayer. And that's just trying to deal with the reality of, the predicament of a given taxpayer that's in trouble.
They would have to keep their current taxes up accurate, right?
I think that's right, yes. Exactly. They would have to comply on a go-forward basis, for sure.
Why does this require any policy change? I mean, isn't it sort of inherently within the power of the city to compromise any claim that's owed to the city? Isn't that something that would just be subject to negotiation by the city attorney under any circumstances? What policy do we need to change to make this happen?
What we're talking about here is implementing a specific program, but you might want to address this, since this is more your field. Mel?
Again, as Lloyd said, the Internal Revenue Service, Franchise Tax Board, has these programs, really, to allow taxpayers to come forward. Yes, the city attorney can strike a negotiation and a deal to settle, but this is not what has happened, because we don't believe taxpayers have the vehicle to really get into this situation. And all we're doing is saying, let's follow the other taxing agencies, which have proven that they've been able to collect more money. It's also important to us to allow them to have the vehicle, so the city gets more money faster.
Frankly, I see it as more of a messaging action than substantive...
Is that what it is? It's more encouraging people to come forward?
I don't see why we would have any problem in establishing this kind of policy when we allow businesses to operate illegally without any compromise. So, I mean, if we have one company in particular that owes 72 million to the city of Los Angeles, and they continue to operate, I don't see why we wouldn't be able to do something like this. But I see it more of a messaging, that we're offering this compromise, and that we need to promote the program, which we're not doing now.
Similarly, to our recommendation six, it's a messaging. But again, we realize the situation with the city's finances, and our recommendations are really geared on both the VDA and the offer and compromise to accelerate funds coming in, to give taxpayers the opportunity. Thank you very much.
We're going to have the CLA come back on all these items. I do have a couple of cards, but let me just say that I wanted to get this in the public view as quickly as possible, so thank you for turning this around so quickly.
Thank you.
For giving us an opportunity. And I turned around so fast, we got to wait for the CLA to catch up. I apologize to the CLA for that. But in two weeks, they will have a full and complete report with specific recommendations on each and every one of these items. And, by the way, the CLA is not the city council. They will make recommendations, but, you know, so we may or may not agree. But we do want their input, that's for sure. So thank you very much. I'd like to call up a couple of people who have submitted cards.
Thank you, gentlemen. You're very good, Chris Stubb.
Thank you. Continue, continue, do good work. Jeff McConnell from VICA, and then David Flax from LA EDC.
Good afternoon. My name is Jeff McConnell. I'm a VICA board member and vice president of Barney Bergoff and Associates. I'm also pleased to acknowledge another VICA board member here today who serves on the BTAC committee, Mel Kohn. He also served on the original BTAC committee, and we appreciate his dedication and commitment. VICA is here today to express our strong support for the BTAC committees.
Who demonstrated such wisdom as to appoint this young man?
Our board. Our board.
Thank you, councilmember Alkon.
Oh, that's right, it was me. Thank you.
There you go.
Thank you for reminding us, Mr. Kohn.
We're here to express our strong support...
Although VICA believes they did it.
It's just another indication of the way you...
But it was VICA who recommended it.
He was recommended to you.
Thank you, okay.
Yeah. Out of nowhere. We recommend our strong support to the BTAC subcommittee's package of 10 recommendations presented here today. We need to do whatever it takes to attract and retain businesses in the city. VICA has advocated for a change to our present LA business tax system for more than 10 years. Our present system is complicated, perceived to be inequitable, and is an obstacle to attracting and retaining businesses. The results of previous business tax cuts have generated increased revenues to city coffers and helped businesses grow. It is anticipated that lower rates and a simpler method of computing those rates will increase the number of businesses which pay taxes by attracting new businesses and keeping existing businesses in our city. In short, the anticipated increase in other taxes will offset the business tax rate reductions. Let us continue to build on the success of this in the previous time and improve LA's business climate even more. We ask that you support these recommendations before you today. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is David Flax. I'm the senior vice president for strategic initiatives with the Los Angeles County Economic Development Corporation. I'm here today to express our support for the 10 recommendations put forth by the Business Tax Advisory Committee, which was so ably chaired by our former chair, Lloyd Greif. Recently, the LA EDC helped facilitate the creation of Los Angeles County's first-ever consensus strategic plan for economic development. This effort brought together 1,050 stakeholders from business, labor, environmental organizations, and other community-based groups to develop a plan to create more jobs, grow our economy, and invigorate our communities. One of the consensus plan's core aspirational goals is to create a business-friendly environment. This is necessary to retain and expand our existing job base, as well as to attract the businesses' jobs and investment that are so critical to a sustainable economy. First and foremost, the city desperately needs jobs. For the last three decades, the city of Los Angeles has markedly underperformed in terms of creating jobs for its 4 million residents. While the city added approximately 1 million new residents from 1980 to 2009, not a single net new job was created for those 1 million residents. In fact, the city of Los Angeles has actually lost more than 150,000 net jobs during this three-decade period. This is simply indecent. There are many reasons for the city's stunted job growth, but one of the chief causes is the real and/or perceived business-friendly environment that currently exists in our city. Remember, businesses are the creators of private sector jobs, which induce and indirectly create more jobs. Together, these direct, indirect, and induced jobs generate the local and state tax revenue that supports the social programs which support our quality of life. The recommendations put forth by the Business Tax Advisory Committee are reasonable, sensible proposals that will go a long way to perpetuating a more business-friendly environment here in Los Angeles. By bringing the city's tax policies in line with state and federal policies, and by bringing more consistency, fairness, predictability, and transparency into the city's business tax code, these recommendations will help create a tax structure and process that is much more hospitable to businesses. In turn, this will put us in a better position to attract and retain businesses, which will go a long way to catalyzing the job growth that we so desperately need. In conclusion, we have done a poor job at creating jobs here in the city of LA over the last 30 years. Consequently, we must all work together to reverse this trend. For these stated reasons, the LA EDC supports the Business Tax Advisory Committee's recommendations, as well as other rational strategies, to help create a more business-friendly environment that will at once create jobs, strengthen the city's economy, and preserve our overall quality of life. Thank you.
Thank you very much. With that, the item will be held in committee for two weeks, and we'll have the CLA. Of course, we will also be working with the city attorney and the CAO, Office of Finance, all the other key players, to make sure that we have a clear understanding before we make decisions on these recommendations. All in all, I think they're very good recommendations, it's just a question of honing in on specifically what the council can do. Item number two.
Item number two is a motion, Alarcon Parks, relative to the creation of business commitment credit for businesses that stay and retain jobs in the city of Los Angeles.
You know what? I actually don't want to spend a lot of time on this. I have no problem. I'd like to refer to BTAC just to get their input on this, so that we can get it in the context of all the other recommendations that are going to be made. Essentially, we're talking about providing a business tax credit to businesses that stay in business in Los Angeles for many years to come. In the short term, I don't expect much from it, but in the long term, when businesses will be making decisions about whether to remain in business or stay in business in Los Angeles, I think it can have a very positive effect, if they know that two years away they have a huge rebate coming on their taxes. So that was the intent. It is not intended to create short-term income, but to retain jobs in the long term. So, but I would like, actually, in my mind, I had intended to send it to BTAC and have it come to this committee, so that's what I'll do. And if I don't have any objection, that will be the order. So if you could, Mr. Kohn, convey that we want this to be in the context of other considerations. But again, none of these recommendations stand on their own as really dramatic changes. All in all, they will, I think, have dramatic change. So if you could put it in that context, and I'd like to get your report back. Thank you. Item number three.
Item number three is a city attorney to verbally report relative to the status of the ordinance pertaining to the Business Tax Administrative Appeals process, decisions, and reclassifications.
Good afternoon. Deputy City Attorney Dan Whitley.
We're giving you more work than ever in the history of your office, I think.
Excuse me, I'm sorry. I apologize. And I'm happy to have the work.
Okay.
It's better than the alternatives.
Yes.
We have drafted the amendment to 2116I to provide for a procedure for the border review to negate assessments that are in conflict with earlier classifications. It was released on April 16th, but apparently did not make it to the clerk's office in time to be heard today. But I can go over what we have changed and go over the procedures for you, and then I assume at the next job committee meeting, we can go over it in more detail, and you'll be able to see it.
Well, why don't you go through it? I mean, my intention was to waive it to council.
Oh, okay.
But we, at some point, we need to know the details of it.
Yes, yes.
But if you could just verbally state what the ordinance does, and then we'll review it as it goes to council.
Certainly. What the ordinance will do is provide that when there is a prior border review determination dealing with classification, and there is now a subsequent border review determination dealing with classification, and nothing has changed with the business operation of that business, then the assessment will be negated. There won't be any ability for the Office of Finance to assess principal, interest, or penalty on the taxpayer. The classification...
Retrospectively?
Retrospectively.
And prospectively?
Prospectively, the classification won't apply until the year after that border review determination becomes final. The tax...
Will it say anything about findings that must be made about the substantive changes?
The determination will still be, will still issue. So the determination by the subsequent border review will still be standing. So the border review will still issue a determination with the...
Part of their determination would include an explanation for how the first border review... What is different from the first border review?
Well, we don't specify that in the ordinance, but it will still be in the, the first border review determination will still be in the record, as will be the subsequent one. So there won't be a need to put those two both in the record.
Why?
Because it will be, it will be clear in the second determination why they made that determination. If they then go into...
That's a big assumption. I mean, is there a problem with saying why one review is different from the other?
There's not a problem with it. We could specify that.
I don't know. Paul, you're a lawyer. It seems to me that if we're going to change the decision of a border review, nothing's changed in the interim in terms of business operation, that we should say why we're changing.
Well, isn't the point here that the first border review determination would continue in effect until there's a subsequent border review determination that rules otherwise? And the point here is to ensure that there's no penalty assessed during that interim period? Is that, am I understanding this correctly?
Well, not just penalty. That there'll be no penalty, no interest, and no principal assessed, that nothing will be assessed.
Well, no, the original assessment would be retained.
Right. But not any increase in it.
Right.
Okay.
So it wouldn't apply retroactively.
Exactly. Right.
I understand that, but I'm just trying to, if there's two border reviews, and the second one does something different than the first one, it seems to me they ought to explain why they're doing something different.
Well, okay, we can specify that in the ordinance.
And I'm asking...
They should. I don't know how you compel that, you know? I don't know how you...
We put it in the ordinance.
All right. The problem with putting that in the ordinance is, I'm not sure what we then do if the border review determination comes out and it's not in there. I don't know what remedy we would do. So for instance, if the border review determination comes out, and somehow we don't have that language in there where the border review determination specifically says that, we then have a problem. Because then, does that mean we don't have a valid determination? Do we not have a valid assessment? And I don't know that...
Wouldn't it be in there?
What?
Why wouldn't it be in there?
Well, that's what, again, if we specify that that's required for it to be a determination, I think it just gives us a potential landmine that may be a problem for us with the border review, because these are drafted by the border review, not by the city attorney's office.
John Wickham with the CLA's office. As you recall from the previous CLA report on the subject matter, this is a specific subset of cases that go to the border review that relate to conflicts between an old BOR decision and a new decision. The question, I think, that you're asking is relevant not just to this subset, but to all of the BOR decisions, to ensure that there's transparency, that there's a clear understanding on behalf of the taxpayer, so that they know what's happening in language that's understandable. So the recommendation we had in our previous report was to ensure that there is greater transparency and clarity of information available to the taxpayers in the border review decisions. That recommendation is still in BTAC for consideration.
See, here's what I fear, is that if the second border review increases the cost to the business, and there's no explanation of why their determination is different than the first, I think then we have a world of problems.
Well, I...
So incumbent on the second border review that when changing the decision of the first border review, they must explain why they changed it.
I completely agree with you. My concern is that if we put that in the body of the ordinance, we're going to be creating problems for the border review. I believe that that's something the border review should do. Well, let's back up a second. If the border review is required to put certain things in its determination, and it doesn't, and so the determination is...
Then it doesn't stand.
Exactly. And so then, we now have...
And why wouldn't they put it in?
Because there could be an error. I mean, they could just make a mistake in their determination.
Then fix it later.
Well, I don't know that we can fix it later. We have a certain period of time to make our assessment.
So then the appeal would stand? In other words, the original border review would stand?
And then...
I can't understand why, if the border review had specific instruction by ordinance to do something, why they wouldn't do it.
Unfortunately, although people are ordered to do things by ordinance, they don't always comply.
Well, put another way, it would be a very subjective determination as to whether or not they had complied with that kind of an instruction. If you instruct that they explain the reasons, and they put in a boilerplate sentence into every one of their subsequent reviews, you know, "Upon the determination of the board, based on the facts and evidence before it, we determine to change our mind," you know, that may not be an adequate explanation, but I can guarantee that they'll just put that into their word processor and include it in all of them. So I don't know if that achieves what we want.
And then, in every refund action that I then litigate, I'm going to now see, not only we challenge the classification, we challenge whether they have a right to do this, and we challenge that the border review issued a proper determination, you know? And so it's going to be another issue we litigate.
Well, the point is to eliminate the challenges, to the extent possible, and the point is not to litigate at all.
Well, I understand that, but unfortunately, we're a relatively litigious society.
No, only because we're not clear. Not only because we're unclear. In other words, if the second border review changes the first border review without explanation, I'm more inclined to appeal. If we...
If we explain why, what the difference is, I'm less likely to appeal it.
I, I understand that that would be-
Okay, so, we'll move this on to council, because I'll waive it out of committee if there's no objection. But I reserve the right to pull it back if, if, if I'm not satisfied with the final language. And I, I, first of all, I need to be educated on, on, on both sides of this. But, but it seems to me that, that the businesses deserve a statement about why the, the second board of review is changing the determination of the first board of review.
No objection to that, Mr. Chairpin. On the subject of education, can I ask you just one more question?
Please.
And this is very general, because I'm trying to understand how the circumstances arises, how circumstance like this arises. In, in what sort of circumstances would you have a situation where there's been no change in the business model, there's been no change in the underlying facts, but there's a subsequent board of review determination that reaches a different conclusion than the first one? Under what circumstances does that happen typically?
It's a different board of review.
That's what I'm getting at. I mean, is it nothing more than just change in people?
It has allegedly only happened once, but theoretically, it could happen because there wasn't a proper and full review of the facts the first time. Or, it could happen because there has been a change in, in the view of what's happened, but more, but it could happen because frankly, a lot of times, we're dealing with gray areas and reasonable minds can differ. So, and it, so as, as Councilman Alkon was saying, it could just be that there's art, there's different people looking at the facts. And so that, that is one of the problems. So, a lot of these are, are gray areas where one set of people could look at the facts and think that it is one classification, another set of people can look at the facts and think that it's another situation.
And so, under what circumstances would a subsequent board of review be permitted? I mean, what, what has to happen in order to get a second hearing before a board of review? What are, what are those procedural circumstances or prerequisites to getting that second review?
There would be a second audit of the taxpayer that would happen, you know, later in time. So, this first taxpayer could have been audited in 95-
For a different tax period.
Right. So, 2010, they're audited again, and the auditor determines that there are different classification, then it goes to the administrative process to the board of review.
Okay. Thank you.
Well, I, I don't think, I, I think, while I recognize that reasonable minds might differ, that, that the, the people would be different in the process, I think we need to tighten it up as much as we can. But it seems to me that if you're, if you're changing, we're talking about business operations that may project out for years to come on the basis of, of a, a certain level of, of taxes, and then they're changed without an explanation for, for what is different, I just don't understand that at all.
Well, I agree. I, I think the board of review should explain the reasons in every case for why they're making their decision, and if there is a change from a past board of review determination, they certainly should do that. But my concern is-
Last, in that one case that you cite, they didn't.
To be honest, I-
And that's, so 100% of the time, as far as we know, they don't do that.
To be honest, I, I don't know the details of that case. I, I don't doubt that that's what happened, but I, I don't know the details of the case.
I, I know that's what happened, and I'm just saying, I don't think that should ever happen again. And in other words, if the second board of review is gonna change something in the first board of review, then that second board of review rises to a new level of accountability. They need to explain why they're changing it.
I completely agree.
Up or down for the business?
And maybe we, maybe there's a possibility of addressing that head-on, rather than saying that they have to explain their reasons in their subsequent opinion. Maybe there is a procedural prerequisite to making a finding different than what was previously found. There's a race judicata effect of a finding by a board of review when there's no change.
I don't know what that is, but that's pretty good.
It, it means that, well, you know, so that a determination made by a board of review can, essentially can be relied upon by that business for all subsequent tax periods unless there is some other additional burden met prior to even having a, a further board of review, like finding of error, or, you know, some, some elevated burden of proof, I think, you know, some, something along those lines. I don't want to think out loud and try and figure this out with you, but, but I, I share your concern about-
Well, I, I understand. Part of the problem in, in the one case that we're talking about was that, that there was a change in the classifications, wasn't there?
Yes.
And so, so there was a different interpretation based on different, a, a different classifications. But also, there was some question about whether or not the business provided sufficient information or provided wrong information. Or in the future, theoretically, there could be the allegation that they, they provided the wrong information. The problem was that it took so long for the second board of review that it's beyond reason. In other words, that's why we're doing the extension of the legislation, because you shouldn't be able to go back 10 years and then charge them for those 10 years. And that, so that's part of the problem as well. We're trying to solve two different problems. One is to correct the, what, what is perceived as an injustice by the council, in this case, that you can go back 10 years and change their tax retroactively. But the other side is, is accountability and transparency, so that, that if you do change it, you gotta say why. I'm just, and I don't see you addressing that with, with your description of the current-
Well, we, we didn't. But I, I don't know that that's a problem that's unique to this situation. I, I think that the board of review is not always as specific as it should be in, in all of its determinations, as Mr. Wickham said. And, and so I, I completely agree, but-
Well, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not overhauling the whole board of review process. I'm just saying, in this case, where you're gonna change a previous board of review action, you gotta explain why. That's all I'm saying. So, anyway, that, we're, we're gonna move forward to the council, but I, I reserve the right to raise this issue in council or work with you on an amendment. When is, when is the ordinance going to be finished?
The ordinance is finished with, but it doesn't, it doesn't have the language that you were just referring to in it, but it's, it's finished. So, if you're going to waive it through to council, it will be heard, you know, in normal course.
Well, then I can still insert an amendment on the council floor.
You can, you can move for an amendment and we will amend it, and then it'll be, you know, then, then-
I don't think the, I don't know if the amendment is so onerous that it can't be done without having to come back again.
I, I don't think so.
Well, what can I?
Yeah.
Okay, that would be my goal. Okay. Thank you very much. Item number four.
Item number four is a community development department report relative to extending the Los Angeles Business Assistant Program contracts with current service providers for an additional 12-month period.
You probably should have done this item first. I apologize to all, all involved. Who's reporting on this one?
We have CDD here to report. Good afternoon.
Miguel Acuna with CD. Yeah, we're basically requesting an extension for, to let contracts with these LABAP providers, the authority expired on March 31, '06, and currently, we don't have the capacity to release an RFP and come back to council committee for authorization for another three years. And this will allow us to extend the contract for one year, come back with the, you know, recommendation for, to release an RFP.
You have any problem with this? Okay, then, without any other comments, the matter is approved.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
I'm sorry. Go ahead.
I claim a card with the CLA's office. I just want to make one, one point. In their report, in regards to the growth contractor side, they recommend selecting the growth contractors, they, they are looking for approval to select those growth contractors, and then also submit the contract. So, we would just recommend that you would ask them to come back with a list of those growth contractors, because in that group, there are several sectors of, of growth industries-
Yeah.
So, so the council could, so the committee could review to make sure that that's what the, the proper sectors that the, the committee was looking at.
Okay, we would accept that as amendment?
Right. Yes, we, we would just recommend that you delete recommendation number four and direct CDD to report to the council with the selected LA BAP growth contractors and the required authorities, and then you can approve that and they could-
That's exactly what I meant.
Right, and that would be acceptable, because we've done that every year.
Okay. Then that-
Sorry, I just wanted to make a quick-
In your order.
Thank you.